All right, I'd like to reconvene the.
Retreat.
Retreat, yes. For village council annual retreat and I think I'm just gonna turn it over to.
Christina.
Christina at this point to kinda go through just for discussions again, reminding the community, anyone listening in that we are not making any decisions.
Okay, so I passed out a chart that says capital project chart general fund 2020-2024. The very first thing says tree removal.
Yep.
You should have two packets, just make sure you're looking at the tree removal one.
Yep.
So this is something new, this is something that we've never done before. Just wanna highlight in the past what we've had is kinda policies that we've set out that we've discussed this land acquisition capital project or. Reserve funds that we have, it's about 360,000. What happened back then was Cancel and Chris, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but Cancel adopted a policy that said we're gonna. Hold 10% or some percentage of our general expenditures or. And account for future use at a later point in time. So we never really had a slated project per se, we just kinda put money aside. This plan that we've got in front of you actually formalizes our capital spending, so we actually make decisions. Based on what we see our priorities over the next five years, so it better helps us financially plan.
Is this not what Tom was just asking if we had?
Yes, yes.
So the answer is yes, we do have this.
Well, we just started this this year.
Okay.
This is something new.
The answer is yes.
Yes.
We do have this.
Correct, yes. So Tom and I just had that discussion, he really liked it, I think he's gonna go back and review it and make sure he's. This is exactly what he's talking about, but on the surface, this is what he was talking about.
That he's comfortable with it.
Well, I mean, just how we've got.
Can you, can you, can you give me a little quick reason for tree removal, why we have a.
Yes.
Because we need it for the, around the walkways and the park and there's dead stuff and.
There's, there's stuff that's dying.
Come on, Park, Park wreck and Greenway meeting, you know, I'm all about it.
This is really a public safety issue.
What are you saying? I'm not involved?
The tree removal is really a public safety issue, just from a liability standpoint, to make sure we don't have trees falling on people and.
Okay, so this is, and maybe a little bit of money because there's, there are individual. Individual landowners here that would. They fall into this, they just can't go cut a tree down, I know, I know our neighborhood.
This, this is on the, I mean, on the, this is in the, the park.
Okay, but is this, is this.
And walkways. It may not necessarily be the entire trees, I think it's like cleaning up the walk through like.
But, but our neighborhood got dinged for it and when they really shouldn't have, I mean, they went through, they went through the process.
We're giving ourselves permission to do it.
Okay, so on that particular project, if you turn three pages back, there's actually a detail sheet that explains that in depth, in depth. It says that our park manager walked through the park with an arborist, they identified risk hazards. On village maintained properties, mostly around the park. So when you see something that's listed here, it should be supported in the back with some documentation. I did not, the where it says administration, I have not physically gone through and done these detail sheets. Cause I just really put this together this week trying to get numbers in here, so where it says. At the bottom where it says administration for the department, you won't see detail sheets on that.
Okay.
It's just, I wanted to make sure y'all are okay with this before we actually went and provided more detail.
That would, it's the park and any greenways or anything?
Yes, we're actually working right now, or we did last week to remove some dead fallen limbs on the loop.
Right.
So this is, this is mainly the park.
Right, but it could be used for the greenway or a little.
What, the estimate that we have right here is, is just for the park. That 13,000. We actually physically got an estimate for that.
And that's only for one year.
Correct, yeah.
So we're not projecting any?
That's just a one-time kinda swoop and getting everything done, we don't think that we're gonna need it, we're gonna try to do it in operating expenditures moving forward. It's just we haven't done it in so long. That it's kinda built up.
Did a big shot.
Yeah.
Okay.
We feel like we can, we can do it annually and get stuff done, but this. Yeah, so the lakeside corridor, this is, these are things that the Parks and Recreation will probably talk with you about this afternoon. In addition to their greenways, one that y'all have that's a little bit different, that's a completely separate one. But these are some of their priorities that they have actually sat through and talked about and discussed, and that's how they. Feel they want to see their priorities take place in the years that, that they've got it slated, and that's what they're asking. They're making this recommendation, I'm assuming y'all made this recommendation and approved it in your last meeting or no?
It wasn't filed yet, that's why I'm gonna get a copy from you.
Okay.
So what we can do in our portion is I'll go through them and just say what we.
Okay.
Formally approved it.
So, and we, we're not asking for approval on this right now, and just so y'all know from a standpoint of approval anyways, when this gets approved. It's not set in stone, it doesn't mean we're definitely gonna do Lakeside Corridor, it just means that y'all agree to that priority in that given year, if the budget allows it, we'll put it in there.
So we'll, so for the approval process for this, basically, we'll look through everything, we'll say these are the priorities. And then whenever we're literally going through the budget process, at that point, then that's when we get it approved. So it's not like we have to go Tuesday night and approve this, okay, so it's through the budget process.
And this is a living, breathing document?
So it changes.
So it changes, it's not, it, again, it's not like, if Lakeside Corridor is not a priority of yours now, and I say yours as in Cancel. Then that's probably something that we should talk about when we adopt the CIP plan, because you need to let me know that, yeah, it's a plan, and we wanna do it, but maybe not 1920, maybe 22, 23.
Okay, and when are we supposed to adopt this?
We, we don't have.
Or do we do that with the budget process?
We would do it right before the budget.
Okay.
We wanted to make sure y'all, y'all were, you know, y'all like this model before we actually spent too much more time on it, so.
I do like this model.
It formalizes the process a lot more.
Yeah, it, it makes it easier to read and see and breaks it down and shows the priorities.
So we can go through all of them if you want to, but the bottom line is, look at the totals at the bottom and it tells you any given year, how much you, we need to start. Planning to spend on capital projects, so when we look at next year, we've got 1.636 million dollars that we are gonna spend. So we've gotta figure out where we're gonna get that money, obviously you know what our annual budget is, we have to figure out how we're gonna get that extra money. When you look at year 21, 2021, you see 70,000 dollars, so that means as. Chris and I go through the budgeting process, we need to make sure we're securing 70,000 dollars somewhere for that project. Or those, those projects, so that's kinda like how we're gonna outline our financial modeling.
And Christina.
Just a question, I mean, and I wasn't here, I missed maybe. When do we, when do we know, I mean, we're now talking 1.5 million for the Village Hall, when did we get that number?
We don't, it's not, is it just a guess?
I'm sorry, we had it allocated like 900,000 or something.
We had a meeting with the architect and that, that number we had proposed to him and he almost laughed us out of it and he said, no. Conservatively, he said in the meeting, 1.5, he goes, but don't be surprised if you go over.
But we don't, won't we have any bids or?
No, we won't know officially until we get bids, this is just a, a sake number.
And then if it's too high, we don't have to take it, correct?
Correct.
Efficient.
Is, are roads, do we have a separate place for roads?
We do not, and I'm gonna go over that after this.
So.
This is, roads would be completely separate.
Oh, okay, so.
Cause it ties into another fund.
Yes, yeah.
Which is really pow bill.
We can put roads in here, but we, because I wanna have a separate discussion about how we've got it.
It's cleaner the other way.
To do that, it makes it easier to.
We, we know we need to spend X amount of dollars, and she's gonna talk about it, but X amount of dollars, it has to be within a certain amount of years, which is cleaner from our numbers standard.
No, I know that, but I'm looking at this 1.636 that we have here, and, and yet I know that roads, we're gonna. Come out of, is that gonna come out of the general fund instead of the capital projects?
It, so when we get to that discussion, I'm basically asking to take all of general fund expenditures out of it and just, just talk about pow bills. So, or pow bills, so that being said, if that's what Cancel adopts, then you won't have any general fund dollars going to roads, which doesn't. Basically means it doesn't need to be on this list.
But we'll still have general fund.
For roads, no.
No, for period, for village signs or loop or land acquisitions.
We're only gonna rely on pow bill.
We'll get to that in just a second.
Do you understand my question?
And that's.
No, I'm not sure, you're looking at.
You don't have to, but that's my, that's my suggestion.
Alright, sorry, I'm not, you know, okay.
You're saying, you know, we're not gonna completely general fund, completely.
No, no, no. Yeah, well, no, 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 okay, so we've got major funds here, so we've got capital project funds, which is this?
No, no.
Okay, so where is this?
General fund.
General fund, so what's capital project?
So, okay.
Do you understand my confusion? Cause there's capital project there.
This is a capital project ordinance, like a capital project fund, this is a capital project plan. So this is.
The ones that were approved already are in that column.
So.
Already approved?
Already approved.
Not approved?
No.
This is.
That's operations. So think about it this way, Kim, you have, the general fund column is like our normal operation, year to year. Okay, in the government, a capital project fund is something where you put projects that may take longer than a year.
Why?
I'm just kidding, I'm gonna face the next Chris.
She looks serious. She looks very serious.
I'm confused too on her.
Sorry. I'm just kidding, calm down.
You want chocolate?
So Kim, this kinda explains like, there's two buckets, we have a general fund bucket and a capital project fund bucket.
Okay.
These are projects y'all already decided.
So this is the middle column here?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Okay, okay, alright.
So.
Okay. In your capital project fund, you have Village Hall.
Yep.
Which has 1,900,000, it's a little less than that.
Okay, cause, cause I don't have it totally broken down right here, okay.
And then Loop, you have about 130.
Yep.
And I'm not, don't quote me on these numbers, Farmer's Market, you have 25.
Okay.
And that's already, money is there set aside already.
And that's, that's, that, that.
We have a new 1.6 coming in in the general fund.
Hold on, so that's the 1.2 that's sitting here.
All of this adds up to be 1.2.
Got it, okay.
Now, there's a couple more I'm missing, but for the most part, that's it.
Okay.
Then you have the, the CIP that we're talking about, it's only a plan.
This?
Yes.
But where's the money?
That's what we're, that's what we'll get to, so let's say next year you have 1.5 that you have to spend.
Okay.
We know we've got 900 and, I'm not taking your money, but let's just say I'm gonna take this money. We know we've got 1 million right there.
Yeah.
So we're gonna take this capital project fund and we're gonna close it out, these two, we're gonna close them out, we're gonna take that money and move it into general fund. As an appropriation and then, and move it back out.
For Village Hall right here?
Yes.
Okay.
Or we can keep it in a capital project fund and just spend it out of there, depending on how we need to do it, but basically it's coming from here. And then whatever the difference is, we've gotta figure out how to fund it in general fund.
So this number, this 1.6 number is where we're trying to find money out of this column?
Both columns.
Both columns?
Yes.
Okay.
Majority of that money, and we'll talk about this in just a second, is gonna come out of that second column. We're gonna take, and I'm not taking your money, Mary, but let's just say we're gonna take some of Mary's money and we're gonna take that Village Hall money. Or I'm actually gonna propose to take money out of land acquisition, which is where that.
Which makes sense.
360,000 is, so majority of it is gonna come from Village Hall and land acquisition.
Okay, I got it, okay.
So we'll have some, we'll have some difference that we have to make up somehow.
I got it.
We may be able to find some in general fund in operating, like for next year, we've, or for this year, we've estimated maybe a 50,000 dollar overage in, in revenues. So that's 50,000 dollars we could pull, worst case scenario, we pull it from fund balance.
Okay.
Which is where we have that money sitting that's, where we have those really high percentages. So.
Year.
Yeah, so then.
180, 190 every year that came out, and then one year we were at 70%.
Is this number on here somewhere?
70,000.
So you have your, your general fund, remember is your operating monies, what you operate with, it's kinda your business money that you use day to day. Your, your fund balance is your savings account.
Like your fun money?
Yes, this is your rainy day fund.
Okay.
So we would take some of this out to move it to this Village Hall project.
Okay.
To get that 1.5.
Okay, I got it.
But again, I'll, I'll tell you to be clear, the CIP is only a plan.
I got it.
If the 1.5 doesn't work in the operating, it just doesn't happen.
So it's only a plan whereas this middle one's already been approved.
Correct.
And that money is sitting in there for that reason.
Yes.
So if we had 1.6 coming in in the general operating fund, just to clarify, and you said approximately 80,000 is the monthly cost, right?
Yes.
So if you took 1.6 divided by 12 months, you get 133,000 dollars. Difference between 133 and the general operation, that's really what you gotta work with.
Correct.
Because it's that per month thing, but it's where are you gonna put those surplus?
And can I make one more comment? The whole reason you set up a capital project fund is because you don't have to reappropriate the money every year, those are for projects that are gonna take longer than one year.
Okay.
Cause you know how we adopt a general fund operating budget every year?
Yep.
Okay, and you move it into a capital project fund, it can extend over a year. Now, in our case, a few years ago, you all adopted some capital project budgets thinking you were going to work on these projects, but we're now here a couple of years later and we haven't even started some of them yet.
Okay.
So that's why it's a little confusing.
So you would still keep the capital project fund for Village Hall? Because it's gonna, it's gonna take longer than a year more than likely, from, from, from beginning to end, now if you feel like it's gonna happen within one fiscal year. You can take it out of the capital project, put it in the operating and just spend it out of operating, it's just cleaner to keep it in the, in the capital project ordinance so that you don't have to worry about scrambling at the end of the year.
So when do we start talking about our priorities on this?
So what I did with the Cancel priorities that y'all handed back to me, I only got two back, so I tried to do as, you know, as good as I could of, of putting that information in here, but I only got two, so.
Just for the record, I turned mine in.
And I turned mine in, correct?
Okay, yes, I, I don't know who turned them in, I kept them in the.
Oh, you didn't put a name on it?
I didn't, I didn't put names on them.
Okay, I handed you mine, so I figured you knew it was mine.
I, I didn't keep track of who turned them in.
Just for the record, I did my homework.
It was the top 20, right?
Yes.
It's very hard.
Was it hard?
To get to my top.
Okay, hold on, so top, top ones were, this is the order?
This, no, I just knew the Village, Village Hall, if I remember, was low on somebody's list, I don't know whose. But I just know that.
Turned low, like what?
It was not one or two or three.
Yeah, that would have been me, for this year, just.
So, I, I put that here for next year because we've been planning and we've been talking about it, so. When we go to adopt this, y'all can change your priorities as a, as a board if that's not what you wanna see. This is just my first stab at trying to get this done and we can change it at a later date before it's adopted. But just, just for illustration purposes, I wanted to get this together in front of.
But not today, cause we're not making any decisions, okay.
Yeah, we're not making any decisions on this, we will bring it back to you for approval, but again, I just wanna be clear, it, once it's approved, it's not set in stone, it has to be part of the budget process.
So when are you gonna bring it back to us to approve it and then it's part of the budget process?
It'll be either in February or March, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Budget process for March.
Any questions? I know there's probably a lot.
No, sorry, no.
No, I'm good, I'm good now, I got it.
Okay, so that's what it is, if y'all wanna take it home and look at it, that's just kinda the basis for what we're starting to, to work through. Again, I'm not asking for approval, it's just so y'all can follow the process.
But tree removal's already been done.
No, it has not, the tree removal has been done on the loop, but it was very minimal, it was 2,000 dollars, I think.
Okay, cause, yeah, I got it, yeah, that needs to be done.
Real quick, since we had that, this new piece, this loop part, that we, it was a 25,000 dollar kinda bonus, have we moved that money?
Oh, Mary's moved it.
Yeah, she moved it.
I'm gonna talk about the, the greenways in detail.
Okay.
So unless y'all have any more questions on this, this will come back to y'all for approval later, I just wanted to, for y'all to see the process.
I got it.
Okay. This is a good way for us to get the ball rolling on our five-year plan and basically, so.
I like it, I like it, I feel like this is easier for you guys and it's much easier for me to understand like kinda what's allocated where and when.
Yeah, and so a lot of our boards, like Parks and Rec, and we've had this conversation, so she's not gonna be offended by me saying this, but. Like Lakeside Corridor, she's got 25,000 slated in there, that's probably a project that is not gonna happen next year because we, we simply can't afford it. They already know that they've, we've roughly been allocating 10 to 15,000 dollars per year on their general use of money. So I've already kinda given her an estimate that I would assume in my head, 10 to 15,000 is what you have to play with. So when they start talking about these projects, yes, they can, they can put it in, in the, in the CIP to approve, but when it comes down to the nuts and bolts of things. We're just not gonna have 25,000 to put on that, so either we're gonna have to talk about financing it or kicking it down the road a little bit.
Or grants.
Or grants, yes, when that, when we, when we have some staff to actually write some grants.
We should hire somebody.
Well, I can do it when I get some time.
Christina, I'm talking about we just hired somebody.
Give everybody some help.
Anyways, so they understand that, they know it, but that's, that's kinda where we're at. Is we have only a certain amount of play money to play with in any given year to do some of these projects, and so we've, that, this. CIP is pretty much where that play money is gonna be used.
I like it, it's good.
So if y'all, if y'all have any questions, I'm gonna move on to roads.
Okay.
The bigger ones. So I'm gonna pass your index out that you initially approved. Few months ago. And if you recall, when we made this approval, I told you that we, we would still bring the schedule back to you for approval, I, we, we were adopting the four-year plan. But I would still bring it back to you for approval annually, but we did go ahead and approve.
Same, what, two, eight, you gave us two of these, the same?
Yeah, they're probably the same.
The both same?
Okay.
I had multiple copies.
Okay.
Turn to the second page where it says sample, at the bottom of the second page, it says sample four-year road plan. And then it has Providence Estates, Providence Ridge, Beechwood.
It's on the backside here.
If you look at that bottom number, it says 257.
Yep.
Carry it over to the next page, with the engineering cost, it's 321.
Yep.
That's what we had initially anticipated it being. Which is, I think, what we probably budgeted for this year.
Where's the 321?
At the very top of the next page.
We just got the bill for this not too long ago, or the estimate for it, it was 390, 388, 390.
It's not bad.
So, no, it's not, but what I do wanna recognize and I do wanna point out, and this is something that I told you when we adopted this, is these prices do not include inflation. So the numbers that we have here.
321 doesn't include inflation?
No.
So that's probably where.
Yes.
Okay. So that's not bad.
The numbers we have in this are problematic from, from the beginning.
Inflation, right.
So I'm gonna pass this out, I've got multiple copies, so just take one.
She's trying to be green.
So this is, this is a little bit confusing when y'all look at it, but let me just break it down for you. The first page that says four-year, look at the one that says four-year that I've actually handwritten on top.
It's just one page, right?
It's just one page. Make sure you're on the, the one that says four-year, the one that says four-year is the one that y'all have adopted, this is exactly what the financial modeling goes out for. 10, 20 years of how this would look if we actually went through with this plan. If you look in 19, we've got the 388, if you look in 20, with inflation, it's estimated at 515, and you keep going down the list. So if we actually go through with the plan that y'all have, essentially, we would have to go up five cent on the tax rate just to pay for this schedule. Over the course of five years, with inflation.
Well, wait a minute, this is construction, aren't, aren't we expecting DOT to participate in this?
Yes.
That's with them participating?
Yes.
Sure, that's a lot of roads.
I understand that, but it's, yeah, okay.
We took the numbers straight from their list, we actually had this discussion with our engineers too. So if we go with this plan as, as been adopted, we're gonna have to come up with some more money.
A billion, a billion and a half.
Well, again, my argument back then was, is like, we get on a, oh, cause initially it was a 20-plus year plan, I think, and it's like. By that time, the person, the group that got their roads done, they may get back in front of the line based on how much it's used, and then you see certain neighborhoods never getting. So I said, that was my argument, if we're gonna do this, we need to do it, can't do it all at once, but do it in a window where everybody understands that, hey, I'm getting something for this.
So with this plan, I have included 30,000 dollars for storm and, um, stormwater and curb and gutter, cause that's not something that we initially anticipated, but that's very minimal, that's only 15,000 dollars per year.
It's not a lot.
Or, no, 30,000 per year, so it's not a whole lot, so there is the chance we can pull some of that out, but we're still gonna have to. Go up on a tax rate just to pay for these roads, which I know is not something that y'all are probably interested in, that's the first problem.
Something I said, and everyone said that, I think there was a councilman that said, there's no way we have to raise taxes. Remember that clearly.
That's the first problem that we have, the second problem that we have is if you look at year 2028. This is basically where we have to start sending money back, we'll have to start sending 171,000 dollars back. Because we have to spend this money that pow bill allocates to us within five years of an allocation. So there's no way, if you look at the total pow bill received, it says 180, we get to a point where we're at 180? Once we finish 100% of our roads, there's, there's nearly no way we're gonna spend 180,000 dollars a year on just random maintenance.
But within a, you remember, when you get it, you have five years to spend it.
But you're accruing it each time.
I, I understand that, but, but there's.
So if you start talking about.
If you want, if you wanna take the level of, you know, get the specs up to the point where we expect our roads to be.
Correct, you're right, you're right.
Really nice, then we're, we're always gonna have nice roads and they're, I guarantee you that money will be eaten up.
There, I mean, we, I'm not saying we can, I personally don't think we can spend that much money, but maybe we can, I don't know.
170,000 dollars on 30 miles of roads?
A year. Per year.
Easily, if it takes, what we spent, we spent 160,000 dollars just to get our roads up to snuff to turn it over to DOT when we did that process.
But then it gets to 709,000 dollars.
That's, yes, what we're sending back because we accumulated so much.
Right. So what you're saying is scooch it out every other year?
If you turn the page to eight years, this is an eight-year plan, it's still pretty aggressive in my opinion, this is just using. Pow bill and a minimum amount of general fund money, so we would still be using some general fund, so Kim, let me correct myself, cause when I told you earlier, we weren't gonna be using general fund, I forgot we were actually using some. So yes, we are using some general fund, if you look at 19, year 19, we put in 247,000 dollars of general fund monies. That's roughly.
And the rest, and the, okay, so we're putting in 247 of our money to go towards the 388?
Which is roughly 2.5 pennies on the tax rate.
Okay, so the 111, the 30,000 and the 138 is all coming from pow bill?
No, the 138 is, is the total of these two.
Oh, okay, so.
Well, it's the total actually of these two, plus what we have to carry over.
Okay.
So what this plan says is instead of doing road resurfacing every year, let's skip it every other year. So we're still getting that cost benefit of having, you know, a large amount of roads being done at one time. And, and less administrative burden of administering that contract.
So then, so then we're, so then we're still receiving the pow bill funds.
We're building it up.
Of 112. But then we're also putting away, I'm sorry.
Yes, that where it says use of general fund, that's what we're putting away each year.
So the 112, we would still put that away even though we're not using it, and then we would take that 146 of pow bill. And just continue to accrue it, and then we would add those two numbers together, to accumulate to.
So you don't, you don't fear any risk of expanding it out, that the inflation between that is not gonna?
We calculated for it.
The engineer gave us a rate to use that he thought included inflation.
We, we had a meeting with AMT and pitched this idea to them, and they actually thought this was a better plan, eight to 10 years, I mean, they, they thought it was more feasible to, to stretch it out than four years, so. They have agreed to this, now let me just make note that we have, like this year, for instance, we spent 247,000 from general fund. If next year we go from 247 to 112, that frees up some money for us to spend on other projects from a general fund standpoint.
So. Let me ask this, who do you expect, as we go forward, to coordinate all of this with DOT?
Christina, yes.
What portion of your time can we take from your salary and put pow bill funds towards that?
None. No, we can't.
Really?
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, except, we're spending our pow bill funds on construction costs, we don't have any extra pow bill funds to spend to allocate to salaries.
But we can.
I get that, can we, can we do in arrears, like if we're gonna spend money this year that we don't have from pow bill, but, but, but we have arrears because she spent 10% of her time working on this and we don't even.
There's no extra money to do that.
Because every year we're having to add general funds to our pow bill to do the roads.
Hang on one second, we can do that, we can do that, but that changes these numbers, so we would basically be taking general fund to supplement.
I, I just think we should be able to.
Six one-way, half a dozen the other, right?
But if you talk about, this is an eight-year plan, so yes, we can do that, but to Chris's point, it changes these dollars, and it's just tip for tax.
But it's six one-way, half a dozen the other, it doesn't matter.
But what you could do is take eight and stretch it to ten or twelve, to have the same financial impact, where general fund is being less impacted by not only salaries, but also the appropriation.
But I like the eight-year, because then, once you get down here, we've got extra money that we can use, because you're still gonna be administering, and you're still gonna have stuff that you're probably not using this one eighty for total resurfacing, right?
And now it's fiscal year thirty-one, which is-
So, to Joe's point-
Thirteen years after we started.
Which is good, right?
Yeah, that, by thirteen years, the first set of roads might need work again.
Right, but they're probably not full-
That's right, this is assuming-
They're not really designed for twenty years.
This, this plan right here-
Right, out thirteen.
This eight-year plan is assuming we don't do anything after year eight, so to your point of, you know, being able to spend the money later, we're still back up on this end over here accumulating that we could spend after year eight. So at that point, that's where we start talking about what we're gonna do again.
And we still have the running Powell Bill funds, we've got a million dollars that we can use for resurfacing. This is just if we don't spend anything, right?
Yes.
This is all accumulating, so what we're saying is, if we haven't spent anything here, then we gotta send this a hundred and eighty thousand back from this, from this one.
And this, this plan is still-
And we clarified what can be used and can't be used on that.
Which we could, so, so, once we're done with the roads, and we may wanna, you know, have like a year or two, then we can do sidewalks, we can do loops and greenways, like, we can update some of that stuff too, right?
Yes.
With Powell Bill?
Yeah.
Another thing can I point out, remember the other thing, um, is if you look at the total use of general funds column on the four-year plan, it's almost a million five, if you look at the total use of general funds on the eight-year plan, it's only a million.
So we're saving general fund dollars, and that general fund dollar can be put back into actual projects that we need that are not allocated, yes.
Right, okay, I like this eight-year plan, I mean, I was definitely for like, push it through, push it through, push it through, let's get it done, but I like this, especially when you told me about the balance and like, how it was gonna accumulate and start to get a little nutty, so I mean, I don't, I like this plan.
So this, this plan, there's a picture coming around, I'll explain that in just a second, but, um, this plan is something that, if, if cancel is amenable to it, then we are gonna prepare the budget with this plan in place. So, um, I guess we need to bring this up in one of the cancel meetings that are upcoming, so that we know and we can gauge the level of interest that y'all have with this eight-year plan, again, I'm not asking for action now, but-
Let's, let's put it on the, uh, February work session, so we can actually talk, like, talk about it, right?
With the eight, with the eight-year plan, with the, what kind of testing, recently, were you talking with this?
None.
On the eight-year?
None.
On the four-year would be?
Five cents.
We would have to be around five cent to do it, just like you have.
Eight-year plan would need no time.
Not unless something crazy happens and inflation just goes through the complete roof and we have it anticipated, but we, we feel pretty comfortable with this. Now, I can't say, I can't say if we have like a major stormwater drain collapse, that we have to use some money for something, um, I, I can anticipate those things, but the, this assumes everything is well, and we still have some.
What do they project how often, that, if roads are for twenty years, what are storm drains?
It depends on what they're made of, I mean, I've seen anywhere from thirty to fifty to eighty. So I don't know what they're, they're actually made of, we couldn't say that until, um, we did a study. So there's another plan too, and I'm not asking for any action on this or anything, but just, just as an idea, that is another type of road, um, pavement preservation, this is actually a, it's not an overlay, it's not, it's not a mill and fill overlay, it's just a straight overlay, it's called liquid road. Um, this is another option that's massively cheaper than an actual profile mill, so we could have portions of our roads that we put this on, or do a pilot project next year to see if it works, to see if it upholds. Um, I think we're gonna get our greenways done with this, or the loop.
The loop.
But just an idea I'll throw out there, that some roads may actually suffice for this type of overlay, and it would be substantially cheaper. It looks good to me, I don't know if it looks good to y'all.
It looks great, like, that's like, we're actually paying a road.
I know, but it's actually the structure underneath that, you know.
Well, you wouldn't do it on, on roads that don't have good substrate, I mean, we'd have to do it on roads that, that are pretty well-sound, like, uh-
Which hopefully, any new developments with the level that we expect, you're not gonna have any.
Like your neighborhood, we drove through it, some roads would, would be fine, some roads wouldn't, the main road, definitely not, but some of the side roads, possibly, uh, we drove through.
For the record, I did stop and talk to the guy who believes he may likely be the inspector, um, for it, and said that they are, for sure, unlike what they did in the past, is they're gonna plan for milling below the curb level, as long as they have a curb level, and I said, okay, because they missed that last time, so there's no lip involved after they do the overlay. They're, and they are gonna mill the edges down, so he said, he likely would be that, his name's Justin or something, but, uh, I think we'll have our, our, um, inspector there as well, but he's the inspector on the DOT side, but they were marking up our neighborhood, and by the way, suggesting as early as Ju- July. Um, they don't run into the issue of doing it during the school year when they're dealing with neighborhoods, the roundabouts would be for that, so, so it's encouraging.
So going back to the discussion I had up there about the general fund and like the capital projects and needing the one point six for next year, um, so if we, if we assume all operating costs stay the same this year as they did, as they will next year, which is a pretty good assumption, I mean, we may have some changes, we've got, you know, another staff member on board, so we may have some changes, um, in the works, but roughly from, from what we've appropriated this year to what we would appropriate next year on the eight-year plan, we have a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar difference to spend on general fund projects. So when you talk about that one point six for next year, we already know we've got one point five that we'll talk about in just a little bit, that gives us another hundred thousand dollars to put towards these projects, to make them happen, so then Mary will be happy if she gets her lakeside corridor.
We're all for your plan, too.
I like this eight-year plan.
So that, that's the intent, um-
Makes sense.
So this could be put on the agenda for February, and we can discuss it.
Let's put it, let's put it on the work session.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions?
No.
Work session, what's your one?
I don't need any. Twenty-eight.
Twenty-third of February.
That way we can like, discuss it, and then we can vote on it in March. Because the agenda's already gone out.
Yeah.
To see.
I'm good on that one, if y'all wanna move on to the next one.
Great, good job, Christina. Good job, Chris.
This next one, again, I want, I do want to thank Chris, because she is involved in a lot of these spreadsheets and coming up, we've been in my office, in her office, crashing numbers, and it's been fun. The next thing is just a couple of miscellaneous things, I just wanted y'all to be aware that we're gonna include in the budget, and these are just things I know off the surface, some other things may potentially pop up. We've discussed the website proposal, twenty-five thousand-ish, uh, for next year, I've actually got it in the CIP plan, if you, if you know, for next year. Um, so it's already encompassing that number, so when we talk about coming up with that one thirty-six, or whatever the other number was, which is actually right at what surplus we would have, minus two thousand dollars. So, that's, um, that number's in there, we, we will put that in the budget if it fits, which I don't have a reason to believe it won't. Transportation plan, um, Union County is doing a transportation plan, it goes back to this whole realignment. Um, they're trying to update that study, they're asking for five thousand dollars from all municipalities.
What realignment are you pointing out?
The one, you remember how they had recently asked about that, and we told them, no.
Morgan School. Morgan School and Morgan's had waxer line.
Oh wait, the one where they just built the roundabout?
And then they have, if I'm not mistaken, I think they had plans at some point to make this-
Wait, they wanted five thousand dollars for the realignment?
No, for another study, because I think they have-
To realign it?
No, that, I think they're trying to four-lane this.
What?
New Town Road, they're trying to-
Four, to four-lane?
Four-lane New Town Road.
They're trying to see if it still needs to be four-laned, so that-
I argue that we need to own it from roundabout to roundabout, if you wanna keep the plan.
So wait, do we have to give them five thousand dollars?
We don't have to, but they've asked for it, for their plan, for their study.
Well, we don't want, we don't want them to do it, so-
Well then, yeah, we don't have to put in the, we don't have to, they've asked for it, so, I told them we would put it in the budget, we don't have to put it in the budget, it doesn't have to be-
They're gonna do what they want anyways, until we are-
So why are we giving them money to do it? Especially if we don't want them to do it.
Like, we have a say.
Well, we won't put it in, if y'all don't, if y'all don't wanna give it to them, it's fine.
Well, are they having a-
They, they can't make us.
Well, I'm saying, yeah, but I'm just saying, if we don't put it in, do we not, then get a vote on it, so is it one of the things we're, y'all, the committee?
I'll, I'll ask them that, that's a good question, I'll ask.
Real quick, um, and not to jump, not to jump back to roads, but we can do, assume, what, what is the ask for Providence widening?
Twenty-nine thousand.
That's it from us?
Mm-hmm.
That's all we're on the hook for?
Because we're not, we're not doing the widening, they just want for the sidewalks from us. And so whatever, out of those three, I think we took-
It's only twenty thousand, of all those choices, it's only twenty-nine thousand, that comes out of out there.
It can.
No, we were gonna use it fee and loo money for that.
Oh, fee and loo from Marvin Gardens?
Five years before we have to pay for that.
Yeah, fee and loo from Marvin Gardens.
Okay.
Since, since our entire board's not here, if y'all are okay with me putting the transportation plan in budget discussions, and then we can decide as the boards take it out, that's fine.
Not yet, oh, I'm sorry, what are we taking out?
Well, I'm gonna keep transportation plan in our budget discussions, just because our entire board's not here.
Oh yeah, I need, I need more information about this too.
Okay.
Because I don't, I mean, we get something for it, or we get dinged if we don't do it, like our-
Yeah, yeah, and I'll try to get some more information. Personnel policy revision, this is something that we know needs to take place, it hasn't been adopted in several, I mean, um, updated in several years, so we wanna just maybe hire a consultant to come in and do an update on our personnel policy.
Which is, like-
I'm gonna guess ten thousand dollars, but that's-
No, 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 like, what, what are we, what policy are we talking, like?
What staff, the personnel policy of staff.
Staff, personnel policy.
There's legal changes that have happened, so for example, with healthcare and things like ACA and all that, and none of those things-
But is it like-
-have been put into our personnel policy.
Okay, alright, okay.
And that, ten thousand is way overpriced, I mean, that's, I'm just throwing that out there just for number sake. Um, it's probably gonna be more like two to five, if I had to really guess, but-
Overestimate and-
Yeah.
Overdeliver.
And that's the only major, the major things that I know of right now that'll be in the budget, just wanted to let y'all know. Um, there may be some stuff that come up between now and then, but that's it that I know of. So next item, unless y'all have any other questions on any of that, law enforcement, this is something that we've been, you know, talking about for several months, did have a meeting with Union County a couple of weeks ago, and they are requesting that we have one more officer. So-
Tell me about that.
They have looked at statistics and-
Like, what do they want, they want another deputy that's outriding the streets, or they want a supervisor who is supervising but not working?
No, they are actually putting in the budget a supervisor for, to administer contracts, so Wesley Chapel, I think, uses them, I'm not sure what other municipalities use them, but they would basically have one supervisor that administers all of those contracts and supervises that staff, we don't pay for it, they're actually asking for it from the county budget, they're gonna fully fund it, we don't have any impact on that. They're asking for us to add additional officer, because they've seen the service calls go up, the volumes go up, but yet, we don't have adequate staff to cover it, so, that's what they're asking for, it is something that y'all have discussed.
We don't have adequate staff, meaning we don't have-
They, well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I should not say that, they feel like we need more staff to cover, as far as from law enforcement side. They feel like we need more staff to cover the level of calls.
One more officer.
Yes. They're actually asking for, I think, five more officers at Wesley Chapel, I believe.
Ooh, or Weddington?
Maybe Weddington.
Weddington.
Weddington already has three.
I can't remember exactly where, but it was five in one of these surrounding places, which I thought was a lot, but, um, we did, so we started law enforcement in two, that, early two thousands.
Me.
So just so y'all are aware, um, two thousand and four, two thousand and six, somewhere in that timeframe, our population was seventeen hundred. So we've quadrupled population, and we're still using the same law enforcement as we did back then, so, just something to think about, we, but one cent on the tax rate will cover a law enforcement officer, is, is kinda what we're looking for.
But I look at it, I'm just looking at the crime rate, I mean, it's just, it's almost nil.
Yeah, and they did say that, too.
And they, they proposed this a year ago, and we didn't really feel the need for it, and I don't see much-
I don't know, I mean, I keep, I mean, I brought it up before, I, I keep hearing people say, you know, it would be nice to have more of a presence, and, and I know you keep saying go to the H O As for it, but from what I've heard, that it would be nice to have more, just more of a presence, you can see more-
And that's what they said, too.
Just, you know, that they're out there, um, and then this way, we can get more than four days covered.
So, so here's, here's what I would propose, um, if we are gonna even remotely consider that we have, we have the ability to schedule when we want, not them, because I think our hands are tied in talking to other communities, they basically come to us, because they're the only supposedly game in town, and they said, this is our contract, right? And this is what it is, and we have very little say, whereas, in talking to other communities, we can combine our resources with Weddington and all that, and kind of like, go into this negotiation, because it's never been presented to us where we have any say in much of it, which is, seems to be a little unfair on our part, I mean-
And that's how the contract is written, however, I will say, they, they've been pretty workable to work with, I mean, we changed Ed's schedule around recently to encompass some of the meetings, and they were pretty, they were pretty flexible with it, so-
But it was my understanding that through these other communities, that it's not being paid through the general fund, they're asking individual towns to come up and pony up-
For the supervisor?
For the supervisor, and I, I don't need to be paying another supervisor, I'm like, if I'm gonna pay anything, I wanna see him on the street.
I, I don't know that's to be the case, because they have not requested any dollar amount from us for it, and I was very clear in that meeting, um, about if they were asking for an increase, I needed to know for my budget, and he said they were putting one hundred percent of that supervisor in their county budget for approval, now whether it's approved or not, I don't know.
I mean, honestly, I mean, I wish everybody was here, because this is the perfect opportunity for us to talk about what, the meeting that we went to.
We should talk about it.
So, we do have this-
There's no point in talking about it.
We do have this in y'all's February meeting.
I know, and, and I think, I mean, I think that's really where it needs to be talked about, so that we can talk about, you know, just the, doing some sort of review of public safety and possibly-
Collaboration with other towns involved, whether it's involved in the contract part of it.
Okay.
Because they're doing the same thing we're doing.
Yeah.
But we're all doing it individually.
And so instead of doing it individually, I feel like we are, we're gonna be better off to join together and try to, and doing some sort of shared services, doing some sort of, you know, and, and I mean, I think that goes back to the FAC, the fire and the EMS services too, so, I think we, I, I really think this is, I mean, it's, again, this is the perfect opportunity to talk about it, but not everybody's here, so it's kind of a moot point, because I think everybody needs to hear our-
We'll talk about it at the February meeting, it, it is in your agenda, I think the contract's in there, and I can't remember what else was in there, but it, it's on your February agenda, we can talk about it, we can hash it out, I just wanted to get the thought in your mind, if y'all were talking about going up an increase, we need to really think about one cent, um, so, because that's what the equation is.
Is that being addressed?
For one officer, be one sir.
Is that being addressed in the survey?
Uh, we did have a question in there, yes.
I think, I think law enforcement's safety is in there.
Well, just a simple question, would you be willing to accept a, a tax increase?
I think it's, I think it's-
It's in there somewhere, yeah.
To pay for, duh, duh, this, this, and this.
But keep in mind that John, Jones's point is, we'll get it out maybe March, but we're not gonna have it back until April, May,
The summer.
Which we would have already needed to approve our budget by then, so, maybe we don't do it this year, um-
Well, that's another thing, it's not on the topic, is getting the budget approved.
I want the budget approved before you go out of town.
But we do have, if we're gonna go up in the tax rate, we do have to do that with this budget, I mean, we can't, we can't go up in a tax rate after the budget's approved, so-
Can we pay for it without having to go up?
We can, but it may jeopardize some of the other projects or services that we would have in place, I mean, we, we talked about freeing up that hundred thousand dollars, which we could use to pay for that without a tax increase, for sure, if we do the road resurfacing schedule, or if we change it to make it ten, twelve years, we could probably free up enough to pay for it. But keep in mind, is I've tentatively already kind of got that money spent on funding these type of projects, so-
Well, I'm just, I mean, I'm just, because I don't wanna, I don't want to not, I don't wanna have to rush through getting additional law enforcement and, and doing a tax increase, and it not, like, we decide not to do it, because we're trying to rush through everything, I would rather take out like, I mean, I know, I mean, you know, the parks and greenways master plan, I know that's important, but I don't think that needs to be done this year, I mean, that's forty thousand.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, these are just, this is just me, I think having another officer presence, I think that's more important than redoing the master plan for parks and greenway.
So yes, we could, we could do it without a tax increase, for sure.
Because, because I mean, I understand, we are getting more services, we have more people, the tax rate will probably eventually go up. But if we can do some of this stuff before we have to do that, I would much rather do that, um, but knowing that, again, we're offering more services, we're doing rates, things are more expensive now, we are going to have to eventually raise taxes, um-
Uh, I, I mean, yes, there's a possibility to do it without a tax increase, no doubt, um, that would take changing the Powell Bill, the, the roads, like we just mentioned, it would also take us removing some of these projects that we have, and I, I would be remiss if I didn't say, we at some point would have to really consider going up, because we have projects that we've been kicking down, down the road, so, if we did it this year, then this year would be the year we start talking about next year going up.
And, and, and just to be clear, one, one cent, which in the media is a twenty percent increase in taxes, only generates-
Hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand.
So that would, so that would pay for the officer, and then we could keep everything else the same.
Yep.
I mean, again, I think the survey's gonna come back and say, yes, we, we're gonna be happy with more public safety, and we're fine spending it, but it, we're not gonna have that information back before we have to approve the budget, which is when we have to do the officer, which is, but we can always, we can, I mean, we could raise taxes on a Thursday in September, too.
No.
No.
Does it, does the contract allow for us to, does the contract allow for us to say, okay, pull an officer out?
We could make that in there as well.
Say that again?
Contract, so we, we allow this officer, because we believe that there's a need for it, ahead of the survey, and then we, we recognize them, and maybe the community says no to it, or whatever, and is it, is there any clause in there where you give them a three-month heads-up and say, okay, we're gonna- where you give them a three-month heads-up and say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna get rid of this?
I, I guarantee there's, I mean, I.
We would have to do a new contract.
Sure, it'd be a buyout type clause, because they gotta find a home for that person.
We, we would have to amend the contract anyways to include it, but I mean, when they hire someone for a job, they've got that risk.